All right, so we are going to start with our CCHS student update.
Okay, perfect. I think that I might be the only one here at the moment, but that's okay. I can definitely get us started. Just give me one minute to share my screen.
Can you see dark?
Okay, perfect. So first of all, members of class government and student senate got the chance to visit through elementary school last Friday. We talked to some of the members of their new student council there, talked about life at the high school and student government in general, and they had a lot of really great questions. So that was a really cool experience. We're thinking about bringing them over to the high school sometime soon, giving them a little tour.
You should be able to talk to him here. Harry, can you hear us?
I can now, yeah.
So, Harry, Zaria is in the room with us. So I think that was probably going to change your presentation a little bit.
Okay, yeah. Can you guys see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. It should, yeah. So, yes, we got a chance to visit the elementary school, which was a lot of fun. And then also last week, we hosted our annual eighth grade training through the CCHS Mentors and Violence Prevention Club. So we had something like thirty participants from CMS, Penn, and Carlisle Middle School, which is a much larger group than we've had for the past couple of years since COVID. So that was really great to see.
Last week on Wednesday was the Healthy Country Food Fest, and it was amazing. There was so much really good food. And I feel like it was just a really good way to like interact with other people's cultures. And it was just really fun. And there was some quickly, there was Trinidadian food. It was so good.
Hi, sorry, I'm a little late. IQH Fest was this past Saturday, and it was also very successful. I think there were a lot of people at CCHS who came to see. There were, I think about, I actually forget the specific number, but there were a lot of student bands and other instrumental groups that performed that were, it was very cool and very popular, so.
Oh, CCHS is going to have a different schedule for tomorrow and on Thursday. Tomorrow is going to be an eleven fifteen release. I think there's like a teacher thing. I don't know what it's called. Oh, there's, there's a professional development day. And on Thursday, there's the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is going to be like during one of the blocks. And yeah.
And then this Friday is going to be Student Senate's annual blood drive. We've usually had this blood drive with Boston Children's Hospital, I think, twice a year. So that's always something, a great way for us to kind of get, give back to the community.
Yeah, definitely. And then also this weekend is going to be homework free, which I know is very exciting for the students. And yeah, it's definitely, I don't know, it's something that we've seen a lot more built into the schedule this year. So that's been very nice as well.
On Monday, spring sports begin. I personally do not do any sports, but I know a lot of my friends do. So it's probably going to be a little more, I think, starting on Monday.
I also don't do sports, but I do chorus. And we have our concert next Tuesday. And it's also going to be a preview for MICA, because our select choir is going to be attending MICA along with the band and instrumental ensembles, I think, sometime in early April.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. You guys are great, as usual, with wonderful updates. We love having Zaria with us today. And you guys really took well with the hybrid, too. I mean, you were first, you guys are ready for us. I love it. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to speak about the multicultural event with a suggestion, and that is maybe next year, we do time lapse photography. Take a picture every sixty seconds. Now, why do I say that? Because I got there at three thirty, and the cafe was empty. And then every few minutes, people kept coming in, coming in, coming in. Nobody knew what to do. Everybody just kind of materialized. They just showed up and did their various things, all the chores, all the setup, of all kinds. It was amazing. The composting station got set up, the cables got set up. Everything just seemed to be spontaneous, but it was actually super well planned. And it made it look spontaneous. It was kind of magic.
And it's pretty much completely like student run and organized, and it's really a huge, big class government work. It's amazing. Thank you. Anyone else for our high school students? Glad you guys have a homework free weekend. It's probably like the best weekend of the year. We didn't have a homework free weekend, so enjoy your time. And we will see you on the twenty-sixth. Feel free to stay. Zaria is going to stay with us. Maybe the whole time. I don't know. So thank you so much. Okay, so thank you. All right, so we are going to enter into the public comment portion. Okay, we're going to go to recognitions, which is not on the agenda. So Zaria and Amelia are with us to talk about Black Student Union. Is that right? Yes. Do you want to move over with Zaria, like sit together? It's always easier when you sit.
No, just pull it out. I have to say, the high school is the best part of our meeting, usually, or we have elementary school kids in here. The kids are the best part. Oh, hi, my name's Amelia. Hi, I'm Zaria. We're MECO students, and we're currently attending public carol health high school. Today, we're going to talk about the Black Student Union, been up to the screen. Mrs. Skinner is our faculty advisor, and Amelia Sepeda is our student advisor. The two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four school year has been one in which we've made connections with Black and Brown students, Black and Brown students of different districts of, yeah, different districts. We're lucky enough to have a potluck with BSC from Bedford in December before winter break. It was a celebration of Christmas in Kwanzaa, but it was also much more than that. Being able to connect with other MECO and non-MECO Black and Brown students was a factor. We were able to share our successes as well as our failures and give and receive feedback on how we can improve our school community. We also have an upcoming potluck with Bedford, Bedford High next Tuesday. Then we're planning to have a potluck with Hades High, BSC, as well. We feel as though, we feel as though, through the BSC, through BSC, we have grown tremendously. And from freshman year to now, we've just done a lot of different activities, and we've just expanded over. One such goal we have set and accomplished was raising money for our sweatshirts for the club. BSC members came together to hold a bake sale, and everyone pitched in their time and effort, and we were able to hit our selling goal for the sweatshirts. Our plan for BSC moving forward is to continue reaching out to other school districts. We want to also grow BSC and other less students, though, in the high school, that even though it's called Black Student Union, everyone is welcome to have it, especially and share their opinions on issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. Are you probably you can pass the phone like that back and forth through your like global vision and like affiliate and always readers or whatever. I was very impressed.
I have a question. How do you get in touch with other school districts? Like, how did that happen?
I don't remember exactly how it happened at first time, but we ended up, we wanted to like have discussions with other BSCs from other school districts, because we felt like having like only one point of view was like not enough. We wanted to see how other BSCs were like handling their club. And I know that, I think it was like two weeks ago, we had a MECO forum, like on MECO alumni, where MECO alumni came, and some MECO, like, staff from MECO came, and we were able to talk to them about, like, other school districts and something like that. And one of them kind of let us, like, was able to place a contact with the other BSCs.
Also, I'm in student center and I'm going to check out.
A reminder, is this year two or year three of BSC?
I just kind of have those, especially new.
Does it, does it feel like more of a mature organization as part of the high school because you've been there for three, four?
BSC to me is both a space where we can study and improve our community, but also it's like just a space for Black and Brown students to just talk to each other and have a space to interact with each other.
I've been given, Jake. Well, thank you so much. Great presentation again. We just want to hear about all the good news at our school. So thank you. And we have a few formal parts of our meeting that happen at every single meeting. So we're going to enter this public comment period. And our public comment period is a period of twenty minutes. And as a reminder, this is made in the public and not with the public. So the school committee will not respond to any comments. So if you're in the room and you'd like to speak, I don't think we brought our blue forms. You can just, you know, raise your hand, and then you can speak, and you will have three minutes. And we'll also, we'll start in the room, and I have my time limit. It's right next to me. Everybody gets free friend. So you have three minutes. We'll start in the room, and then we'll go online. Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shilah. I have a junior high son at school, Dana, but I have two concerns about the school, about the late sports transportation. So one of them, my son was left out in the school after the workday, November twenty, February eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. So after the workday, even though the rest of the son, after the program was over, so they left both of them at the school with no supervision, with nobody. So I didn't complain because my son called me and said, "Mommy, we're here by ourselves. There's no coach, nobody." I said, he said, um,
sounded nervous.
So, so Mr. That was his wife, was supposed to be there, because of the traffic. I said, "So nobody stay with you guys?" He said, "No, everybody went home." So I keep on the phone until the, his wife got there and dropped him off. So the second time, it was Friday, October twenty-third, the football game. So there was a way home at the front. So the game's supposed to end by, they're supposed to get back to school by nine o'clock, and the bus may buzz with, and nine thirty, I pumped them. So the game finished at nine thirty, and nobody called the bus. They were supposed to call the bus at the school. So by the time they got to school, the bus left. So when he got outside, he said, "There's no bus, anything." I said, "What do you mean?" It was almost ten o'clock at night. There's no coach, there's nobody. The janitor, the guy who works there, and another student was in school waiting for the sister to pick him up, and he's pumped up. So I have to call Miss J. She called me back to try to find out the bus to pick him up at ten o'clock at night, and he got home at eleven p.m. Something that's not acceptable. If you're the coach, the coach is supposed to be responsible for the students until everybody gets home. So all the time, when I said, "Of course, something, well, the person decided, I'm not responsible for it," but you're not, but we're responsible for the kids. Because if any kid is with me, I'm responsible until everybody gets home. So don't just leave my stuff. He had the phone. He could have someone die, or not have the phone with him at all. So how are we going to communicate? There's nobody at the school for him to wait to get home at ten o'clock at night. So I'm thinking like, the school should be traveling with the kids, especially from Boston, where they get to on better communication. If you're late, find a way to get down with the transportation, so they can hold at the bus for the kids to get back home. And then he wasn't even playing. He had to support the team. Does he part of it? So it's fine. He didn't even play that day because he's a JV. So it's fine. I said, "You go, you go, you're supposed to go." But I think, I don't think that was, that was fair. And then nobody got back to me, so I didn't think, so just leave it to others.
Look online. If you have a public comment, please use somebody's hand feature. See, no one online, anyone else in the room? Any other public comment in the room? Okay, we will move on. All right, so next we have our consent agenda. And does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, Tracy, the January, January twenty-third minutes. If you could just move on to the next meeting, I guess, and I just thought I mentioned that those.
Okay. Right, anyone else have anything to pull up on the consent agenda?
I don't, but before we vote, I wanted to hear just a little bit about some of the donations.
Sure.
I think there's anything.
Yeah, I think there's quite a bit here, obviously. So just a thank you to the volleyball boosters that are subsidizing your polls for the volleyball nets. The CMS school as a whole did Best in the State at Jordan's Furniture's Code Drive, so they won some money for after-school programs. We have an individual donating to our scholarship fund. Most of the residents, the exception of the last piece, is the contribution of various booster groups toward upgrading the padding at Memorial Field. So they really teamed up to do that. Tennis, baseball, lacrosse, field hockey have all contributed. And then lastly, though, Willard PTG is subsidizing a Math Olympiad after-school program. And that's the, that's the second that goes through the step.
Maybe you can't generalize, but in terms of the athletic equipment, what is the communication back and forth such that the booster groups know what our needs are?
I believe Mr. Junk is his name. I know he made sure Mr. Conrad and I got to see the condition of the padding on the field. So I'm sure when they are asking what the priorities are, he, I'm sure he names that because we did have safety concerns.
Yeah, and I think when I looked at this, and I think we've run nine thousand donations, just athletic donations, so grateful to all the booster clubs that have really fundraised for their influential teams. All right, so I would actually motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of the January twenty-third minutes.
Sure.
Second, second, further discussion?
Let's just thank you. These are extraordinary, gen- generous, extraordinarily generous donations.
Hey, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, and we will move on to correspondence. If the region, I think we had two pieces of correspondence. One, a thank you from the robotics team. We're looking forward to seeing how they do in their competition, to see if they'll be going on to Houston. And then we had a question about was Latin open for the summer? So that was, they forward ahead of the region, and if I find more, I'll report it on the next day.
And then at Concord Public Schools, we had a question from Conference Team Lincoln about some of our literacy programs in Concord and whether they'd be a good fit for the chat.
All right. A further discussion on that? All right, our discussion, best part of the night. So we're going to start with the finance committee hearing recap. Lex and I attended the finance committee hearing with Lori and Bob. I think almost all Concord members were there, and I think I saw Carlisle was at the Pinkcom hearing, too, which was great. And we, I, I pretty much just read what we discussed at our last meeting on the amenities building. So the finance committee recap and the amenities building discussion, we're going to do both of them together, because I think that they are married in the hands of hand here. I presented the three options to the finance committee. Option one was to, mix up my options, I play them all. Option one was to Lori's, Lori's recommendation, which be, would be to use the hundred fifty thousand dollars that is surplus from the CCHS for a paving project, which would go into capital stabilization if it's not utilized, and use that for design and feasibility of the amenities building, which is, as we know, the fancy bird for bathrooms at Memorial Stadium. That is option one. Option two would be to amend our article for town meeting and ask the town to fund the hundred fifty thousand dollar feasibility study and design. And option three is to proceed as planned, which is to move forward the amenities part of it. We've heard from the Concord Select Board, Carlisle Select Board, Concord Pinkcom, Carlisle Pinkcom, and it's clear that they would like us to wait on our article. So I think the first part of our discussion tonight is just to make it easier. Are there any options that we should remove in this discussion, just without even dealing with it? I think I know what the answer is going to be, but if anybody would like to suggest an option to remove for discussion? Option one, two, or three. Is anyone opposed to one of the options? Let's start with that.
I'm opposed to moving two point three million at this point. Yes, I think we've heard loudly clear that in the estimation of some governmental bodies in both towns, we're moving two point three. I think we have set this number of twenty-two bathrooms as a theta complete. We had a state planning board, a fellow who used to work for the town building department. When he was asked by somebody in town government, not itself, is twenty-two in firement? The answer was secret variance. Then the question was, well, could we get relief? Which I think means could we zero out the need, to which the answer was not, from, I mean, this is, which is about no, O'Reilly, was unlikely, but you should try, and you all know. So I think we should do the exercise of finding out if there's a real need.
Can you just give a little more background to Mr. Who is Mr. Riley? Sorry.
Well, if I go to my phone, I think I'll use an old paper with this person.
Oh, no, 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 just like how this discussion came about.
I called the building department.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
I said, "How, how is the number determined?"
Yeah, okay.
And this was the answer. The answer was, "We've already looked into it," said the building department. And apparently, I'm sure they've been in touch with somebody at the front of the table. And then they shared with me, "We don't know why you're not asking for relief." And I said, "Well, should we, could we?" And the answer was, the fellow has already answered. He won't get released, and he won't get zeroed out, but you won't know what you'll get until you ask. And then the comment was, "If you think you can only get twenty-two, and you need half that, why don't you be the ones who set the precedent and get what you really need?"
So is everyone in agreement that we should remove the two point three for North of Delaware Warren article from the town meeting? So we brought a agreement, just, just, yeah.
Yeah, and while I'll say, I do agree with that. I do think, though, it's important to have on the record that, you know, this is a, this is a really tricky choice, because on the one hand, we have a commitment to making our campus a place that's welcome for everybody and safe for everybody, whether you are a freshman in high school that's physically fit, or you, and, and fine, whether you are a disabled student at our high school, or whether you are a resident using our very, very public campus. So that is, is a tricky thing. So we're balancing that with really hard financial conditions in our town. So to me, it's a really hard choice. These are both really valid concerns. I tend to think that the moral obligation is to being ADA compliant and making sure that the campus is accessible for everybody. But I'm also a pragmatist, and if it's not the right time for that, I think that's an unbelievable shame, but I'll accept it and, and be fine with moving to option three with great reluctance from an ethical and moral standpoint. When would be the right time, though? So generally, we don't interact with people. Our meetings would be like nine and a half hours if we answered every question. So.
There is something else that came up at Pinkcom when the school committee made the claim that this would benefit everybody in town. That was, does that mean it's going to be open most of all of the time? And I think we have to make clear to people that it's not going to be open. We're going to secure it, and our own staff is going to open and close it when we have events required.
I don't think that's going to turn.
Well, then I'd like to know the budget for the maintenance, so that if in fact it's going to be a huge asset, it's only seven days in, because if it is, that's a great change of course, and we need, we need money. There is regional obligation.
We would even have somebody checking that, so I think that we'll save that. Anyway, I don't think that we have to have a comment.
No, but it suggests that we're moving a little more quickly than we're able to. That's all. But don't be saying we don't want another bathroom. And nobody's saying that we want to act in a way that's less than moral. I don't think that's really under debate. I think we're asking, how do we do this?
And, you know, I think that I've been, I've been advocating for this since, I don't know, last spring, maybe. I don't know. I went through and I looked at all of our meetings, because there's been, you know, some discussion about security, and that's a surprise. And I went through twenty-five public meetings that either I've spoken about it or we've talked about it. So I, you know, I still want to be committed to bring the awareness of this project. And I certainly understand the financial constraints in both towns, but I also think we have to consider the accessibility issue. So as long as we continue to talk about this and ways to get it done, and if we're all in agreement, that this is very necessary at our stadium, so that we do have that accessibility down by the fields. And I think it should be, continue to be our top priority. It's a function of how we're going to get this done. If we're going to look for funds wherever we can look for them, we've heard that suggestion. So I, I would suggest that, you know, whether it's this year or next year, as we proceed down this process, once we decide which was looking forward, we should be asking the CPC in both towns for funding. We should be looking for the municipal ADA compliance grants. If there are any other grants out there that we can find, maybe a donor will arise. You never know if that could happen. I would love it if that would happen. I was approached by the Lions Club actually yesterday. So, you know, I, I don't think it would be a large donation, but, you know, I, I think that now that we have an awareness of this project, that we should be looking at all revenue sources that we can find to offset the loss of this. So I would very much want us to continue to be part of discussion. It was part of our school technicals this year, as we look at the CCHS facilities, and this is all part of that. So as long as we are going to continue this discussion and do the best that we can do for anyone using our facilities, I think that, you know, we should talk about the other two options.
In order to make certain we have a record behind us that's accurate, I once again want to ask this committee to revisit the amendments of October tenth. If this was something for a public session, bring it up together now. And move that the minutes of the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, nine dash D action item be corrected. I have a written document here that will provide the original language.
Are you moving this right now? Are you moving this right now?
I just did, yes. I know it doesn't have a second, so I won't start the conversation on it.
My second point is that's going to be pretty brief, you think?
It should be brief. I, I brought this up before. I was asked to prepare something beyond what I had sent to the chair before. What you will read is the minutes that we approved, and then my recommendation for correction. Quite simply, we made two votes on October tenth, and there was only one reference, quote, passes five zero. But when we looked at the tape, there was actually two votes, an amendment that failed two to five, followed by a main motion that then was voted five, and two extensions. So in order to set the record straight, unless someone disagrees with me, I think this would be inappropriate time, but we'll clean up our record before we move on and make further decisions about this stuff from Roger.
If everyone wants to take a minute to look at this and see if this is a change that we want to entertain this motion, I will say, just for clarity purposes, I did check in with the MASC, and this is, if we have changes to minutes, whether they are draft minutes or they are past minutes, we must do it in a public session. So this is exactly, exactly the process that we should be following. Everyone has the minutes, not just the chair, so everyone can look at these minutes. So, Ward, can I ask you to just repeat your motion?
Just for clarity. I moved it to even as of the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, Roman numeral nine dash D action item being corrected and amended. Roman numeral nine dash D action item being corrected and amended as follows, or stated in my handout.
Okay, we have a second from Cynthia. So any further discussion?
So to me, regardless of the nuanced differences in the text, this, I don't like this precedent to set. We've approved these minutes. The time to do that was when we did it in November. This, to me, just sets, I don't know, a yucky precedent, precedent that anytime somebody is gonna disagree with something in the future, or doesn't do their due diligence in the moment of looking at the minutes to really go through what, what they are. You know, the time for that due diligence has come and gone, and I don't think this is a great precedent that we wanna set.
I would, I'm fair with the fact that I don't consider it as nuanced. I don't consider it yucky, I consider it accurate. And I don't think the tape will dispute that. To say that a single vote of five zero was, was somehow okay to continue in a historical record.
Again, I'm not talking for the substance.
Even though it is, it is demonstrably incorrect, is not yucky, it's not nuanced, it's, it's.
I'm not talking about the content, Port. I'm talking about the fact that we're setting a precedent where I apologize that you didn't do your due diligence when you should have.
I apologize, I didn't do my due diligence.
But again, it's the precedent that it set.
I'm here to apologize and correct it, and I was one of seven votes. Apparently, somebody else in the room didn't do their due diligence, but I'll take full responsibility.
Okay, so we had a motion on the table. We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, so everybody, oh. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Post, Nick. So we will move on from that and continue back in our discussion about the amenities building warrant article. So we now are left with two options. The first option is for, to use the hundred fifty thousand dollars in surplus. The second option is to amend our motion for town giving. So I think what we need to do is really have a discussion about the way we're gonna proceed forward with that, and if people have a preference, one way or the other. And I will let the committee discuss first, and I have a opinion on it also, so. Anyone like to start?
I have some questions.
Yeah.
So if we move the article to one, we have to wait, right?
Well, we're gonna amend the article. And then we, we're amending the article. How's their, I can own vote on hundred fifty thousand?
That's my big question.
Oh, meaning it's so insignificant.
I don't know, we have asked the moderator, right?
We. What's the alternative?
Yeah, I think you would amend that. I think without asking for it, you would amend the number down, and then it would be a town vote. You know, that's, to me, is not acceptable in terms of the expense for the town.
That's the only reason, nature reason, he knows that. I'm not opposed to moving it down.
Unless the town manager agreed with you and didn't borrow it, and she found another source, yes, felt super complicated, so.
Why can't we make a decision on that?
Until you have clarity on that. Okay, that's fair. Anyone else?
So the only thing that, would it, would we move faster if we did the other option?
So I guess my own concern about, well, we could ask to move faster if we did the other option. The town has seen this in the warrant article, so we've seen the the language in the warrant article. I think there is benefit to discussing with the town, kind of what our plans are moving forward, right? And so the question is, how can we do that? And maybe there's a way to devote. I don't know. I think we would need a little bit more. I've already been moderator. And actually, the moderator of the whole town.
And town managers, yeah, right.
Yeah.
So I don't think we could vote on it tonight, unless we had a definition. We've got, it's pretty easy. Can you move on?
Yeah.
That's pretty important, right?
Would everybody agree?
You could vote to eliminate an option.
Sure.
Right, then, when we get there.
I think it's important that we vote to eliminate an option, because I think that both Carlisle and Concord can come, so on the ball right now. And I think that that might give them some, a little bit of breathing room. Sure. While we're still in discussions over this, and then we'll.
And the only, to make it clear, the only reason we're voting deciding on an option tonight is
I just wanted to say, I agree with Cynthia. My, when you asked your first question, I was gonna say, yeah, let's just knock three off the list and deal with one and two. But for, I mean, I know what one is, but two, right, I, I have got questions about that. That would still, the one fifty would be between both towns. Right? So that would still have to go over a regional agreement.
Yeah.
Um, and then, I mean, I, what to do with your assume, but my assumption is, right, if we do number one, that would be quicker. But then my question is, that a hundred and fifty-three K is, is there something? Schools just don't have access money. Well, I guess sometimes we do. But like, what else? What would that have gone to?
I'm trying to play Bob on that one.
So.
So it's restricted. We had a capital project.
Okay.
And.
So this money just for capital projects? So it's not like if we use this, somebody's not getting books? Because that's kind of what it would have been. Okay, that was just like, yeah.
Yeah.
There's capital project, but is the project, capital project is more than we budgeted for? So our source of funds is the capital project funding. Plus, we use some of our operating budget from last year, and I'm not gonna give you the specific numbers. And that's in capital stabilization. When you borrow, you have to lose your capital project dollars first, so we spent down a capital project dollars first. We have to use more of it to pay for what we did, so we either use the money we took from capital stabilization, or we use the money we took from the operating budget. We have flexibility to do either. Regardless, we have savings. We don't need to use all the capital stabilization money the project came in. Significantly under budget, for reasons I explained in the meeting. So the money that came for staff with capital stabilization can only be used for capital projects. We have to return its capital stabilization first, and then connect it available to other capital purposes, but, you know, we can't use it for books. We can't use it for savings. I can only use it for capital projects.
Okay. So, and I just want, I know, I agree with Cynthia, because I don't think everybody can, uh, vote, but they might have all of the information on number two, but just personally for me, I, I feel number one is the way to move forward.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so why don't I get clarity from both moderators? And I will bring that back on the twenty-sixth. Any other questions that people have?
Just the mechanics.
Mechanics.
Because of both. We have to need money from the town.
You mean like how to do the warrant?
So I think town managers need to get it both.
Getting the moderator.
Moderator, yeah. That's perfect. So, um, when we get down to the voting section at the bottom, perhaps we can just open up any option three, which is moving the art forward as it's. Okay.
Well, just to note, anyone in the Zoom audience, may you just turn off your cameras if you're not an active participant in our meetings, just get some views in when you're watching. Thanks.
We're going to see metro program updates, and we are excited. Today, we have Dwayne and Andrew with us to start our presentation on program updates. Thank you for joining us, and you can introduce yourselves, and I'm looking forward to it.
Please include some of the other Mecca staff in the room and on the Zoom.
Absolutely.
Everybody's working nice.
Thanks.
First, I just want to thank you guys for, the school committee for coming here to Boston, to our Metro HQ, to be here with us and having a meeting here. I think it really just resembles a partnership that we have as a district, as a program. I'm a little bit nervous, so pardon me.
Don't be nervous. We're nervous every meeting. It's totally fine.
Just to name, Deb Jameson will be here, but she's not feeling well tonight, so he's running solo a little unexpected.
And secondly, and most importantly, just want to thank the parents. And some of the students that are here, you guys have a fantastic job presenting on your behalf for high school, but season, my parents are really good feeling as well. We have Latoya Ogbonna, who's here. She is our newly hired KP eight Mecca adjunct counselor here with us tonight. And some of our other staff, or if you'd like, and introduce the other staff as well.
Yeah, so Launch is on, I see.
Yep. So our other Mecca staff that are either online or elsewhere, Solange Benjamin, she is our CPS elementary tutor. Actually, excuse me, she's our elementary academic liaison, Listen Silva, who is our plus monitor and elementary tutor. Andre Thomas, who is our Mecca academic liaison. And Latoya, who I just introduced. Myself, I'm Dwayne Flacher. I am the Mecca director for Concord Publishers. Shout out to Deb Jameson. She can be here with us tonight. So I really want my portion of this, of this meeting to be more of a conversation rather than a presentation, me talking at you, but before I do that, just gonna highlight some of the areas that we wanted to talk about, give you some updates, and then we can have a conversation. So for K through eight, we focus on the academic growth and achievement, and also student emotional, student social, emotional well-being, and their sense of belonging. And so for our K through eight, since one of our highlights for the academic growth and achievement is having seventeen students on honor roll this year, an increase of eleven students. And students feel uncomfortable to access directed studies in other intervention sessions during the day. They have access to additional opportunities such as homework club and one-on-one academic support with specific core teachers as they so choose. Some of the updates on this, on that support are students that are receiving RTI in both math and reading, in small groups, in class with reading specialists and tutors. And at the middle school level, one thing we're looking to improve are just more intervention and study hall opportunities for students with or without specialized education plans and services. For this social, emotional well-being, along with their sense of belonging, we are really happy to have hired Latoya to be on board with us. She is an incredible asset. And a very short amount of time, it's been some incredible work, and I think that's been really tremendous for our program, especially at the elementary level. And we look forward to seeing what she's gonna do at the middle school level as well. We are participating in the Tenacity Challenge at the middle school level, which I know folks might be familiar with at the high school level, which is essentially an academic challenge specifically for students of color in urban and suburban middle school, middle schools across Massachusetts, essentially like an academic Olympics, and then some other areas improvement that we wanna focus on for the sense of well-being. It's just identifying best practices of form, sufficient self-esteem, and healthy friendships, and I think part of that is some of the work that Latoya, definitely Solange, and also will be doing with the students, and then, excuse me, I'm sorry. For Deb, for, for the, for CCHS, now I'm happy to jump in.
And can I just say that Dwayne got this information probably this afternoon, that Deb went and then.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, the same areas of focus at the, at the high school, so the academic growth and achievement at the high school level with forty-seven percent of our Mecca students participate in an achievement strategy, which is a resource center, and they call it MARK, so the Mathic Academic Resource Center. And the achievement strategies continue to present an excellent, an excellent opportunity for our Mecca students to collaborate and exchange ideas relative to their classwork. And for an update or initiative, as far as their social, emotional, and well-being, would be that thirty percent of Mecca students receive weekly mental health counseling from their Mecca adjunct counselor, who was in LPI. And also, pardon you, an area improvement that we're looking to improve for the academic growth and achievement is addressing the underrepresentation of Mecca students in honors and AP classes. And I know that Andrew, along with Ms. Jameson, are looking to have more conversations with the high school leadership about that, to prevent barriers that are, to, to address the barriers that are preventing our students from accessing such classes like that. So that is the most I'll try to like, talk at you. I'm gonna try to black myself a little bit more, and like I said, I'm just really hoping to have more of a conversation.
All right, so the community, do we have any questions, comments?
If you all wanna welcome. Where, where are you based?
I'm at Alcott right now, but eventually, I mean, I just started last month.
Yeah.
It's been a month. It's been a month.
But I should be moving into the middle school like soon, and really enjoying getting to know some of our littles. I see one of them in the audience right now. And the multicultural fair was phenomenal. It was, it's really a breath of fresh air to be in Concord for a while.
Was I right? How it just sort of?
I did go to the high school one. They had one at Alcott, and it was phenomenal, so. But I grabbed the one at the high school was amazing, too. So. Thank you.
Do you, I'm gonna put you on this, but do you want to just give them your background a little bit, since you're?
My name is on the wall here. I was formerly the Swampscott Mecca director, and in Swampscott for it's like nine, nine years and ten months. And so I, I come with a slew of, of consulting. I just, I come with a lot of background, but I'm really enjoying being in the school adjustment counselor role. That's what I went to school for, and that's, you know, that's what I give my students a shout out about, so I'm happy to be doing this work. And, and also being a great help to Andrew and Deb and, and Dwayne. It's great.
Yeah. Great. I mean, I look at the changes over the past, I mean, I wanna say like three years, I like, I mean, like, we have a, just a department. I mean, we really have a department, and I'm grateful, you know, for all of you and what you do every day. And it really just benefits all of us, and benefits the kids, and the teachers, everybody. So thank you.
Yeah, I feel that. It's like a real commitment, and sometimes, you know, our role here is to look at budgets and mind items and those kinds of things, but to me, when I see all of you guys, and when we hear Lori and Andrew talk about the substantive changes, it, it really is so much more than, it really brings an investment to life, and I think that that is what makes what we're all doing here feel meaningful, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to talk to us about kind of what it looks like and the achievements you've made, because that should be something the community's talking about.
If I can be candid, this is probably the most diverse group that I've ever worked with, in the sense of now I am not the only one person in the room. Now I am not the only person, you know, having to manage something that are, can be tough to manage at times. So I'm, I'm really grateful to be part of this team. They're all really phenomenal. They work really hard, and they really love what they do every day.
To your point around this being just a discussion, I wonder if we could have a bit of discussion. I don't know whether we turn to Lori first or Andrew. But what I'd like to look at for a few minutes here is how we're trying to meet the challenges of keeping our enrollment strong. We are one of the geographic outliers, so it's a rough bus, bus drive. The, the family eligibility criteria changed, and I could probably enumerate other challenges, but I'm curious if we could start to look toward both ambitious but still achievable goals for what we want for incoming students to keep this program really strong, really robust.
Like, I mean, the big, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So I just started in August, and I, you know, I'm coming from another Mecca district, but I also went to school the next time over from Concord, and I think it's still, when I was going to school in the nineties, early two thousands, that Concord always had a prestige about them that I think still needs to stay, so I think hopefully, amazing your question, but I think students from Boston still do wanna come to Concord despite any barriers or challenges that maybe you identified, and I think that's reflective in our enrollment, which we're going through right now, that we have a lot of students, a lot of families, rather, that wanna be a part of this experience and be, you know, and be a Concord Mecca student.
And I'd also like to add to that.
Good.
Just, just being a new person and coming from somewhere else, it really, the investment that the district is giving to even have more faculty added to, to their department, it demonstrates the investment that the district has, and the parents, the families, the Mecca, they will see that as well. That is one of the biggest breaks of a lot of districts, is there are not enough staff. There's. That is one of the biggest breaks of a lot of districts is there are not enough staff, there's not enough people to do the bus stuff. There's not enough people, there's no social workers in a lot of districts. And so like, from my understanding and from my experience, Concord might be ahead of the game. And then I think that will do really well for enrollment as well, the parents see, while they have a robust department, it has supports. I think my child would be better off here than somewhere else, so.
Can I forget, even when kids are enrolling or families are enrolling in Mecca. It's my understanding that you don't get to say, my top choice is.
So our chief enrollment officer is right here, Womar Taheda, so I think, Womar, if you don't mind asking that.
Our second year given parents a choice to. Three districts, and actually, there's a lot of interest for Concord, a lot of interest. Lori, I don't know if this is a question for you or for you, but the. I know last year we had talked about like growing the numbers in specifically that elementary level, can you, are we still looking at?
Yes, that's the logistical answer to the question, they answered so beautifully. What we really tried to do was look at making sure we were filling in the grade levels at Alcott. And so we did bring some students in at any point that we hadn't in the past. So that, that was one change we made, this year we're still debating whether we're gonna do that or just really focusing on a really strong kindergarten group and supporting them.
Is that our next year?
I think next year we're gonna probably focus on K again, but I think the fact that we are gonna be fluid with it is a change. We have been pretty static, like our engine bricks were certain grades and that was it. And I think by being willing to look at it, you know, with a little more flexibility that over time is gonna serve us very well.
I think historically too, we have to look at just the experience of our Mecca students, so you know, I've been in districts where. You are only placing students at the middle school level versus the high school level versus the elementary level, right, and. I have experienced all of those and particularly in Concord, right, and I think a lot of our students who are successful. Throughout their entire educational career in Concord are those who started in kindergarten, right, and and. You know, I was, when I was Mecca director, a lot of the students we placed at the high school. Now I'll be completely honest, and I think I've said this to this group, to to the school committee, is that, you know, they struggled, they struggled. And I see and I and I compare their experience with the students who have been in Concord since kindergarten and they are thriving. Right, they they understand the academic rigor, they have established those deep-rooted friendships and. Right, and and when you place a student at the ninth grade level, it's gonna take them two years just to get comfortable. With that environment, forget about the academics, right, there are students that are absolutely are going to. Meet those challenges academically, but the vast majority of the students that I have experienced with. Have struggled and it takes them again, just too long to catch up and then by the time they know it, they're graduating. And they're facing insurmountable challenges in terms of college enrollment, you know. So we don't wanna set up students to fail and at the same time, we also have to recognize the the benefits of starting. A student at that elementary level kindergarten.
So as a Concord Mecca student that started in high school, I don't agree with that. I went to an exam school and came to Concord, so I did not have to catch up, and I think that Boston does have choices that are good. I know I had it, I, my daughter was accepted at Lincoln and it was. It was a good start, like when when we went, they wanted to keep my daughter back, so amazed because she went to school in Boston. But she was at a really good charter school in Boston, so I said, well, let me just look at, well, maybe, maybe they aren't doing something more. And when I went, they were like commenting and like, you know, my daughter's reading, so I'm like, alright, well, you know, you just wanna sit, you know, you just wanna. I just think that when you say things like that, kind of like. Set, you know, says that Boston schools are, no, and I'm, for the most part, you think I'm not saying it great, but I'm just saying some Boston students. Every every student that comes from Boston is not gonna be behind. Or any other district, I think that, you know, we shouldn't, shouldn't label things like that, I don't advise. I just think, and then, I think that we, you know, and it is good, my son's been here since kindergarten, so I understand that, I understand your point. Though not because I come in like way, maybe they bring a different perspective, like a very different, you know, adjusted vibe to the high school.
So what's the percentage of kids that started in kindergarten who are taking AP classes in high school?
Who are or are not? Who are taking AP classes? Oh, boy.
Since they've been there since kindergarten. So how many of them are in and how many are not?
You know, the the Brian Miller and Katie Saw, the two co-principals of the high school, and there there is actually data that spans over ten years. And off the top of my head, to be honest with you, the the numbers were low. In terms of how many Mecca students had actually enrolled in an AP course, not just enrolled, but also like. Took the AP exam and so forth, the numbers were really low over the span of ten years in comparison with their white. Asian and Hispanic students and peers, so I can get you that exact, you know, data if 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 you need to see it.
The question is, what is the district doing to bring those kids up to speed? To make sure that the next graduating class. Doesn't have those individuals who can. My daughter's been in the calculus program, she rocks at it, but man, she's on taking three AP classes, so. To Esha's point, there's a lot of students that should be in AP but they're not. Why aren't, why aren't they given the same, especially if they come in in kindergarten? You know, they should be on that track, that should be something that should, you know, a part of their their. Their student package from day one, like we wanna increase these numbers, like you said, yeah, so what are we actually doing to make those numbers come true?
Yeah, I'll just grab that one real quickly, the high school principals just last week put a lot of data up in front of the high school staff. And it was the aggregate data, but then it was broken out by subgroups and it was glaring. That we have an issue across the board on a number of different factors where. There's a pretty big discrepancy over the performance of of the white population and the and the black population, so. I think the first thing is the data is the first part of the story, then we've gotta start unpeeling that. And I'm not gonna say it's just a high school issue, because it's not, right, they inherit whatever they inherit. And we're gonna need to start unraveling those layers and I think. Naming it as blatantly as we're trying to and naming it in front of the staff, who are working really hard, but also have to figure. What's causing what along beside of us, we can't, there's nothing we can top down to fix the problem, they have to be sitting next to us. Now it's, I think, content area by content area that we have to decipher. Where is the path falling apart, is it falling apart way back at elementary school and then we can't get, catch them up enough? Or is it something that happens gradually over time? So there's a lot of questions that we don't have answers to yet, but that's the work that we're really digging into, calculus project is one. Piece of the answer, I believe that strongly, but it's the math portion of the answer, and I don't know that it's fixing the underlying causes. It's somewhat symptom treating for sure, but like why is, why are we getting to the point where we need a calculus project is one of my questions, so. That's the work we're doing right now and I think committing to over the next. Number of years very intensely, and again, it's a K twelve conversation, it's not just a high school conversation, because. That path doesn't get determined just once you get to ninth grade, so. The Domingos, the numbers are way too low, like I'm just, we we know that and we, we are very involved in wanting to direct it by that, so.
And I should say, Zariah, which I didn't say to you before, you always have a seat at our school play table, so if you have anything to add into the discussion. You can, so I just wanted to let you know that, because you are our student rep representing our students. But don't feel like I'm putting you on the spot. You wanna say something, you can, but you don't. And anything that comes up in our conversation, okay? So I'm not gonna make you talk, but if you had something to add.
I was gonna say like, personally, I don't know that many students like who are either from Mecca or just Latin Brown students who are taking. AP or honors courses. I know some, some of my friends, we used to be in the same classroom, we're starting on like freshman year. And then it kind of got more divided as we progressed. So I don't, I don't know if it's just like the pacing or like how and to jump from one thing to the next, but that was.
I wonder if I could come back to the important idea of belonging in in this way. Just in the last couple of weeks, on two occasions, I've heard community members say things to the effect of. We do a good job of introducing Boston students to Concord schools before school starts. And then the conversation continued, could we do more to introduce them to the entire community? And I know it's a bit of a leading question, but. Thoughts about that and what would a better job look like?
Can I share one idea that we just spoke about, about the community tour? Alright, so just last week, we, I met with, I met with Millie, CEO of Mecca. And one of the areas that we are thinking about, one of the initiatives that we're thinking about actually is. The fact that, I have said this many times, Concord, town of Concord. Has a rich history, anti-racist history, right, African-American history in Concord runs deep, right, and I think. It's so important to highlight that for any family. Whether you're Boston family, Concord or Carlisle family. That if you go to school within limits of Concord, that you know about that rich history. And so what what we meant with Millie about was to plan as part of the new student orientation process. Was to, it was to include a a community tour, the African-American history tour that the Robbins House. Already has a structure for, right, and to engage families right at the onset, right when. After they go through the registration as part of their school orientation. That the community tour, African-American history tour is part of that orientation. And what I heard loud and clear from Millie is number one, this is amazing. Concord should model this initiative for other districts, because let's face it. There's probably an African-American history. In any of these thirty-three Mecca districts, right, and if we're not showcasing that, if we're not teaching. Our students, our families about that history, right, how else are they gonna feel that, to your question, to that. Sense of connection, sense of belonging, and so that's, that was literally last Friday that that I met with Millie, and so. We're putting together sort of the specifics for for that programming initiative and. You know, I think to your question, or I think that is just one way that we can build those connections with families.
And I'd offer up, and I'm just one member with one opinion, don't stop at. How does Afro-American history, because belonging means belonging.
Can you by any chance, we're not letting other people know. No, we're sorry, we, so we had a significant coffee last year, but I think one of our parents was at. In Boston and I think that the coffee environment allows us to speak a little bit more freely, so we can definitely. Look towards maybe sending another coffee, so we can just do that, you know, kind of face to face. And I think it's great to have in Boston and maybe we can work with IKEA to kind of get that done, we'll pick a place. And and then we can have more informal conversation than we can in the.
And I hope that. You know, we would try to get some more Concord and Carlisle. Parents and students to come to Boston, make it, you know, a real community event. Because that's, to me, what that does all the back, right, it's just not a one-way transaction, when you come. Boston students come to us, right, we're we're kind of, it's it's for our community. It's just not for the Mecca students, I think that's like the core of the Mecca. Right, because we all benefit, you know, so.
And I appreciate you saying that, Cynthia, that what I really wanted to harp on too was within our, in our schools and our program and just our family and friends program. And really try to really enhance the integration between both, both communities, so doing events that are in Boston and doing events that are in Concord. And elsewhere where it's family, it's family friendly and it's fun and the kids are enjoying themselves and having a time and we've got a slew of things we've been done. Apple picking, we've been at the Umbrella Arts Center, we've done roller skating, right, that's K through eight, I know that there are different initiatives that are going on at high school as well. I won't push you on the spot. But but yeah, I think really just trying to, like I said, just achieve that full integration between both communities and. The comment is saying that this is, like you said, Cynthia, a mutual transaction where we're both, both communities are are benefiting from this experience. Not just the Concord Mecca students.
Sharon, I.
Student success story, I think is important to Deborah's advice. It's so important, especially in the younger, earlier grades, to look up at a teacher that looks like you. That does so much, that relieves so much stress, that's just understanding, when we talk about belonging. That is such a key factor, that would go so far, and I think that would really drive some of our student success stories. Also, when we talk about Concord history, also make sure we know Boston history, because that's. All of our kids want to be together, I I think if we have more opportunities to have our kids just come together, and I think language is important. I don't think it should be a Boston family, Carlisle family, Concord family, these are Concord students, Carlisle students, so I think language isn't very important. It may seem very small and nuanced, but it's not, and any language that kind of makes you marginalize the other, it has an impact. So I think part of improving student success is diversity rights. I I I remember the first teacher I had that looks like me, and I can't tell you how significant that was. And I was grateful, so I think it's important to do that, and it's just another part, I I think our students who live in Boston. Come with a lot of talent. And most of them are multi, we talk about having global students, they're gonna go so far, and testing is important, grades are important. But these kids have a step up, because they have that part to their whole career and their experience. So scores are part of it, but also realize that they, you know, a lot of the languages, they're catching up and catching up, catching up. They have so much as going to help the citizens, so I I think that's important, and which not to use touch-up language, but. Acknowledge the talents that need to happen.
If if I can, that that was, that was sort of, if I can add to that with just one update that that Deborah did share. So we have fourteen seniors that are graduating this year. Out of that, let's see here, ten of those students are attending in the fall, four-year college or university. Two are going into the military and two are entering the workforce. Okay, so just thought I would, I would share that, and then actually, in addition to that, Deborah. For two years in a row now have. She's sort of chaperoned students to the annual HBCU, Historically Black Colleges and Universities, fair that is held right here in the city. And six out of the eleven students she took on this, on this, on this college fair. Six of those students have received acceptance letters to an HBCU in the fall.
Andrew, can I put your, his thoughts aside, but one more thing, maybe the hiring conference that you're gonna go to?
Yeah, 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 so MPDE, Massachusetts Partnership to Diversity in Education. We are, we are a member with MPDE and. The NIZAN HR Director and I are attending their annual Career Fair this Saturday. And it's hosted by Easton Public Schools. And the conference, rather, conference, the Career Fair is widely attended by. Bipolar educators across the Commonwealth, last year was our first year we attended the Career Fair and. We, two things happened, number one was we were given access to the candidate pool that MPDE organizes. And within that candidate pool, again, are bipolar educators across all disciplines, all, you know. Career tracks within the education field, specifically public school. Education, and so we're very excited to be attending that again this year, and we hope to, you know, really build a, really a pool. Of candidates that potentially could fill some of our anticipated vacancies for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So that is happening this Saturday in Eastern, so we'll be there.
Last, I know last year they were working on like a video to to showcase like Mecca families. All former students, whether right now, or just so you can get a clearer vision of what a Mecca family actually looks like, I think that's. Sometimes in Concord, the people in Concord have this, have misconceptions of what a Mecca family is, and are you still working on that?
Uh, to be honest with you, I'm not sure where we landed with that last, last year. Uh, to be honest with you, I'm not sure where we landed with that last last year, um. But that has been in the works since I got into Concord, one of the first introductions I received. When I got here Concord was actually from a a Carlisle resident student who actually sent me the video. From when Aaron Janka's former medical director was at CC. And that that was one of the first sort of, again, introduction I had, and so I think it's so important for us to create that. When I was medical director, I really wanted the students to be to be sort of the videographers. To really showcase their day and make it really intimate, um. Those students did start the video and they graduated two years ago. And so I think it's 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 it requires students, it requires a commitment. Of 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 our students to really say, yes, this is something I want to showcase for the community. And then number two, I think i- i- we just have to be consistent in terms of, you know, uh, in terms of our ask. For for those students, for those families, because it is a big commitment, right, to be walking around every day. You know, in the school, privacy concerns are part of that, um. And 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 making sure families are actually comfortable with their child. Because it is a, let's face it, it is a distraction, right? And so we just have to be mindful of that, um. The students that really wanted to, well, the students that did commit to it. Were um, required a bit of training, you know, we had. Uh, Minuteman Media, uh, trained them on some of the equipment, so that takes time. Uh, they were after school with me, um, I met with middle schoolers. You know, uh, to get them trained, because we were touring with, okay, most students have a cell phone. And the issue we faced with Minuteman Media was that oftentimes the quality. Of those recordings may not be great, and so that's that's that was sort of the impetus in 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 training students on how to use. Some of the professional equipment that Minuteman Media had, and so there are a lot of logistical pieces to all of this, it's not something we just want to. Get done per se, you know, um, and so, yeah, I mean, I I think talking with students, making sure they're committed to it, uh. Something doing and Deborah and myself can really uh work on and and make it happen.
I think it is true, yeah.
Or or you guys, to to get other, to rest of our teachers and the staff and and to just get. More students and more more families comfortable with trying to confide, I know I've had a lot of conversations with. People that were just, you know, they were, they were unsure of, you know, this conference is so far, I'm like, it's really not that far, but. You know, and they, they were nervous about what the day was like, so to see, I think that would be such a good tool for um, for enrollment and for.
Yeah.
Guys for staff.
Yeah, it was about four or five years ago, um, that one of the kids made. An individual project that I happened to be lucky enough to be in the English classroom when she presented, and she had done a much less formal version of this from the. Minute she got up through the whole day to the minute she got back home. And it it changed me into just the the, you know, perspective of. Seeing the day from the student, um, so you're right, you're absolutely right.
I think Bedford had, Bedford has a video, because I watched that one last year, they did one, um. I think it was around an anniversary and and I think it really. Got a world premiere and had everything along with it, but we also have an opportunity with Julie, who is. Um, meeting network, so you know, maybe the part of it, because I know she's looking to do things specifically like them, so that'd be great.
Yep.
I have a question, how many participants do we have in the medical, uh, the families? We buy like families out in Concord. Um. I think, so I don't have like a certain exact number, but I think we do have a good turnout, so I'll. So like for in October, we had our uh, our apple picking event at the um, at the middle school level, we had um. Probably over fifty students, um, not all of which are are metro students, but. I would say anywhere between eighteen and twenty metro students that joined, and then they had thirty plus. Other Concord students that that joined as well, along with our chaperones and whatnot, and I think, um. For our umbrella arts, um, like our just arts and crafts uh event that we had, probably about fifty-fifty of. Uh, metro students that that were there as long as, as well as um, Concord students too, so. We'll have like an exact number for you, but um, I think we do get the. We get, we get a sufficient amount of participation, but we would always like, um, and I know that beginning of the year that. Lori had um, made an outreach to to all of our families as well, our our Concord family specifically, so to to integrate better with us, I think that's something I'm gonna. To focus on um, for the rest of the year and in the next year.
I think Solange has a hand up, and Solange is one of our staff members, which is the exception to speaking in a meeting.
So every time we have those a big event, like apple picking, we had uh the Shavu, the roller skating. And also we have a picnic in the beginning of the year. Um, early September, and we do have another picnic at the end of the year in May. Um, usually when we are SVP, the number is somewhere around seventy. Um, seventy, um, people, including metro, um, students, so. If I were to say a ratio, it would be like. Sixty, forty. And um, also, one of the things that I run into is the fact that. Um, after COVID, a lot of parents are going back to work. It's a little bit challenging to get a lot of people to sign into the family friends program, but we do. Um, we said, we started this new um pilot program and we were doing more group activities. Which are um, amazing, a lot of people comes because it's group. And chaperones, um, we never lack chaperones on both sides, metro families shows up. And also Concord family shows up, so it's not perfect, but I've had conversations with um, somebody from from another district. Who's trying to um, start up their programs, a program similar to our family friends program. We're doing much better than others.
Andrew, could you stop the screen share so they can see?
Oh, it's nice, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Solange, we're really glad you've joined us. There she is.
I have a question.
Yes, um, I know you're not the high school, but also for middle school. Do you guys survey, like, we're hearing a lot from parents and. What we're doing? How are the kids doing? And I'm, I'm, not that I don't care about academics, but I'm not talking about academics. I know as um, from Carlisle and we, we only move over like sixty, seventy kids every year. And it can be a little, you know. You you can go over, you can go to Concord and not be in class with other kids you know in Carlisle. And obviously, that's a thing for metro students, you're coming from, you know.
Yeah.
Um. And I find, or. It's been said that there's a lot of kids who they still cluster, you know what I mean, but still with Concord kids and in Carlisle kids. And I swear, I remember a couple of years ago, there was a few kids. Who talked about that and would not go down, like, you know, we live together and. Um, that is a hard thing, I think, in high school period, to, you know, you can't, it's not like kindergarten where you can go, here you go, play with this other kindergarten now. They're teenagers. And they're gonna, but do you survey your kids and say, how are you doing? What are your challenges? How do you, you know? How do you feel being?
Yeah, so um, I would say. Informally, I'm I'm surveying them, have a conversation with them as well, uh, in addition to uh Andre Thomas, who is our. I can't believe he's on at the middle school level, but I I would tell you, I think one of my favorite things. Is to walk through the halls of PBD and St. Mor, and just see kids just really just. Going going to class or going going places with their peers that are not just metro students, um, that they are completely. You know, just integrated in a sense that they have friends from Concord that they are, you know, socializing with and walking in class with and enjoying lunch with and. Bringing to the Mecca office, um, whenever they're going to see myself or Mr. Thomas, and I think that is. Is really gratifying to see that, you know, I think Andrew kind of spoke to it where. A lot of these kids have started at an elementary level and have built these friendships and relationships over time, and I think it is reflective and just, you know. Seeing them in the hallway, or when, you know, one one medical kid signs up to do apple picking, then. They have two or three friends that want to go with them, where we have kids there after school, not because they're doing some sort of uh enrichment or, you know, extracurricular activity, but they're. Actually just saying in in the district with their friends and they want to hang out and get a slice of pizza or get ice cream, so. Those are my, you know, like I said, those are my ways when I when I see something like that.
And I know you're not.
Yeah, I mean, I I I I will love to put Zaria on the spot, I'm I'm coming for you. I'm coming for you, because it's important, your perspective is probably more important. Yeah, yeah, your perspective is more important than, you know, us, but um, I will say this, what I have seen over the years since. My time as medical director is I am seeing more and more of our medical students. Engaging with Concord Carlisle students more than ever. And that's across the board, there isn't a moment where I walk into that high school and, I mean, let's face it. Besides your friend circle, and you guys are tight, I get it. I see more students just out with each other, with other Concord, I mean, it it whether they're studying together, whether they're sitting at lunch together. Whether they're inviting them to room two O two, which is the medical space. It has completely, like, it has completely changed from when I was medical director, which is wonderful to uh to see, but, sorry.
Personally, I do, I do agree that there, like, there's kind of like a click factor, like, you you tend to. Like, get along with and have more in common with people who are in the same neighborhood as you, you go to, you go to school, you. Get on the bus at five in the morning together, so it's like, it's easier to like. Become friends and stay friends with these people because you guys share similar lives. Of course, I do have a lot of Concord friends, and I feel like. The school has been. Even, not only becoming better, but it's just been good at creating an environment where students feel comfortable talking with each other no matter. Their race or background, um, but. I I still think that it's it's just easier to, like, I understand, like. I I could say sometimes it's harder for me to like interact, like, especially when I first got in, like, first enrolled in Concord. Um, in middle school, I just wasn't able to make a lot of friendships with. Like, people from Concord because of the fact that, uh, it was harder for me to get home where I was, I couldn't hang out in town, I. Didn't live in the same neighborhood, I didn't understand some of the things they were talking about, like, oh.
They're telling stories from kindergarten, you're like, yeah, I know.
So I I feel like it's easy to say that my friend group, it's just. But like, I I do think that it, like, overall, they've made an environment. Where kids feel comfortable enough to talk with one another and not feel like professionally, never so scared.
So I'm gonna please on the spot, what would you like to see change about that after school?
Hmm.
Experience. Um, what do you think we could do, like, one or two things, and you can write, come to us like, at next meeting, like, if you have a great thought.
I'm not too sure about it, because I feel like it really just is like the time factor, like, I spend so much time on a bus, I feel like. It's like even on, what is it called, uh, half days, like, I spend about half the time during that day. Get on a bus, like, yeah, it's literally just, it's just really about the time, I feel like if there's more time in the day, a lot more students would just like. Have, feel like they have the free, like, the freeness to do more things together and like, hang out with each other.
Do you think we could do a better job trying to do things on weekends? Or that?
Well, I, I feel like maybe in the middle school, I feel like.
Yeah, I'm thinking plays and then things like that.
Yeah, like, I, like. I know, like, in the high school, I feel like a lot more students. Know they have the arenas to like go and do stuff, like, like, show for activities, you know, with your friends, staying out just longer. And even staying over at their friend's house in the city, have a chance to. But like, in middle school, I feel like I didn't really understand or know that I had that choice. So I feel like maybe more stuff in like the middle school for that, or like even in elementary school.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Well, this is awesome, I mean, really, great update, you guys really did a great job, there's no need to be nervous, brave. We wish everyone here with us.
Sweat gone now, sweat them on now.
Really think so many positives from tonight and really, you know, working out, like, you're going to be hiring, um, here this weekend. And as you said, like, boy, like, you know, you feel like you belong here, and you know, we do have this robust department that has been built over the past few years. Everyone that's in this group, so, so thank you so much for coming to David's tonight. And please stay with the rest of it, because we still have some more to get through in our agenda.
Bill, thank you guys again for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the next thing on our agenda, we're gonna talk about the alumni medical panel. So this year, um, at the high school was the first year that we have. A revised schedule that allows for um, two times during the week of a flex block. We've been widely well-received according to Zaria, Harry and Felicity, um.
No, snack, don't plug the block on half days, sorry.
Yeah, so that's twice. Um, so. One of the benefits of these flex blocks are that they provide. The school district and the kids to do things that are a little bit less academically structured. More kind of social emotionally oriented and, um, in the case of a few weeks ago. Um, they allowed Ayesha, um, and some other folks who had graduated, um. From CCHS to come back, little known Beth, Ayesha and I were classmates. Um, I was a senior at CCHS when she was a freshman. Um, she was probably taller than me, you know, each other, I'm sure, anyway, and so, um. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ayesha, who's gonna talk a little bit about the panel and her experience and. Just in keeping in tonight's uh fashion, if you want to try it.
I thought the experience was awesome, um, I know you guys, you got high next to what she was coming. Yes, so, um, she is a fast forward, and she is now the medical board, medical director of Natick, so, um. Yeah, I just thought it was awesome to, you know, we had such a, a while, you know, Andy was awesome with getting such a, you know. The time, you know, we had people that got here like ten years before us, and, no, it was just, it was just, it was like, that was a really, really good event. Right, the time we do, the time we do, by a lot of people.
I think what I was impressed by, it was as many staff as students, which I thought was really, really great, I mean.
In the audience?
Yes, so they had, they made choices too to attend and really, really hear the perspective, so it was a really powerful hour. No question about that, so.
Did people talk about, like, the different clouds change at Concord, uh, for the years, or their little experiences? Or what were some of the things?
I think, um, one of the biggest things were, um, how Concord, how going to school Concord, how. How we kind of like the, what they learned, and what, and the takeaways from being a metro student, just getting much, they're all. How we, how they took it with them throughout their life, so, um, even into their adulthood.
And it was a mix of Concord for a lot of Boston. Students in the seventh grade.
If the school committee, you have been there, would have changed at all, if they think they did?
No.
I do have an audio, um, that I can share with the school committee, we did record it, um, so. Maybe people on the band. Uh, five.
Five.
And two. Two of the panelists, um, became medical directors, which I felt was cool, um. And. Go ahead, go ahead. Hello basketball person, so I just wanted to emphasize that, but one of them is actually right now coaching the state semifinal three boys basketball. And what is your school?
What's cool?
You need to make sure you put that on the record.
Which is really disappointing for me, because I really enjoyed that ride. Um, well, that's great, I mean, I I heard only great things about the panel, one thing that came out of the panel, I think you said the director of Natick. Was asking about, and this kind of leads into, well, actually, hers, she doesn't lead into it, would have been perfect if it did.
Yeah.
But, um, we're gonna talk at the last part of discussion about our Mecca representatives, we shared Mecca's and Ayesha. So looking at how they can bring that to Natick, so.
Yeah, she approached me at the end to get.
Great.
I think because I, I think. You agree totally.
Yeah, she stopped, I saw her, I bumped into her like in Washington, it was like a year ago.
That's great. That's great, great.
Uh, alright, and then next, um, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to IKEA. So I have had the pleasure the last like year and a half, I guess, of, um, Tracy, the superintendent. Um, and I meet monthly with ECG presidents at all of the. Um, and I meet monthly with PTG presidents at all of the schools and I think it was last year when you guys um launched the Mecca PTG that collected. Um, you started coming, so I think this is your second year with that, yeah. Um, so we asked Akia here this evening to talk a little bit about what the Mecca PTG has been up to and um turn it over to you to do that.
Awesome. Um, of course I didn't print this out because I was just kind of excited.
You need to project it.
Oh, no, no, it's just my notes. Um, so I'll just read, read off. So, hi, everyone. I'm excited to be here, honored to be here. Uh, the first time that I came and spoke to the school committee, it was about two years ago. And I must say that we've made a lot of progress. Um, two years ago, a group of Boston parents voiced their concerns about the lack of equity, inclusion in the Concord School Committee uh and the impact that that has to all of our students. Uh, two years ago, we asked for more transparency. We asked to be included in the hiring of the new K through eight Mecca Director. We asked for holistic diversity, inclusion and belonging training to all staff. Overall, we really asked for a seat at the table and today I stand in front of you to share that I believe and the parents believe that we have made progress. Uh, the Mecca parents asked for a seat on uh two seats on the school committee and we helped um drive that and elected uh two members here that are with us today. Um, we've also organized multiple parent socia ls in Boston, really with the goal to increase engagement and foster community. Um, we have proactively shared input on school events to ensure that they're more accessible. Other PTG chairs have done a great job at including us in some of the event planning that happens in our schools like math night, multicultural night, uh the Mon, the Mecca and Concord Buddy Program. Um, we also continue to support and advise parents as they kind of navigate the complexities of the Mecca program here at Concord. However, there are opportunities and I think there will always be opportunities for improvement. Um, the Mecca PTG really has no connection or relationship with Mecca Inc. Um, and I think it was brought up today. There are other towns that are reaching out to us to see how can we do what you guys are doing. Um, and I think we could be partnering with Mecca E eight to help facilitate that. Um, and you know, help coordinate that at a higher level. Transportation also continues to be a challenge and I think limits Boston students' participation in before school and after school programs. So we talk about academics. We talk about participation in AP and honors classes. I do think there's probably, and I'm guessing, a correlation on, you know, being in the chess club at Alcott or maybe doing the uh rec, rec Concord rec and doing ski. And so transportation continues to be a challenge for Boston students that wanna participate. Me personally, I'm driving my daughter Leila out to Concord every Thursday for her to participate in chess. Um, this is her third year participating in chess. She's done it since kindergarten. So transportation, I think, is a complex issue, but I think that's something that we should work to uh improve as it relates to before and after school programs. We also would love to see more Boston parents get involved. I think, you know, talking to other PTG chair, chairs um and other parents in the Concord community, that's not just a Boston problem. Um, I think the pandemic has changed the way that parents uh get involved, um but we would love to see more Boston parents get involved. We'll talk about um the school committee seat, you know, I, I think in the next session, um but that's definitely related. Um, and then overall, just strengthening the Boston and Concord family connection and really being intentional about how we do that um is another uh opportunity. But I think, you know, when I think about the first time I spoke in front of the school committee, I was a parent of a kindergartner, a Mecca alum um from the Brookline School System, which is, it's different. It's just different. It's closer to the city. You know, it's easy for my parents to get me back and forth to swim team practice and, you know, all the extracurricular um activities. Concord's far. And so I think until we're able to really solve for that transportation challenge, um that will continue to be an opportunity for our students um to really be engaged in, in a part of the community at Concord. So I didn't have much, but that's all I had. Um, so you know, open to feedback. Yeah, open to feedback, questions or suggestions or anything you wanna hear from me.
Do you think that it would um, that it would benefit like if you tried to get like cross and proud families involved in like in the bucket of Buddy over? I know last time we were here at Mecca, one of her Carlisle parents said she would like to get involved, but even though she's from Carlisle, but just because so her kids can be a button nose.
I think the coordination and the project management of the Buddy programs needs to be owned by someone. So I think right now it's kind of a grassroots collective. We got some parents that are helping. We have uh Mecca staff that is helping. But I think if it's a program that we wanna see, you know, grow in terms of its participation, we need an owner of that program and we need some key metrics, like what are the metrics we're trying to hit? Is it the number of kids that are signing up? Is it, we wanna see an increase in, you know, group activities that, you know, I think we need to think about how we define the success of that and we need an owner of that program. Great question. Anything else for me?
No, I was just gonna say that um to your point earlier, a couple of people said it, is that the only way right now, I, in my opinion, like Carlisle and Concord kids get so neat before high school is sports. And those are the only way my Concord sons stay relationships with people in Carlisle. I don't know, I've probably other ways. Um, and that's I guess what we need to think about because that's probably gonna be difficult for you too. That's a lot of work to try to, try to get and the Boston students involved in athletics, but it's not off the table.
No, and we do, we definitely have a lot of Boston students that have participated in youth sports like Concord, like soccer, flag football before they get into the high school. I think it definitely um is helpful. Generally, you know, but it's, it's a huge time commitment, which I recognize on parents because it's driving out to Congress on Saturday, Sunday, in addition to that Thursday, or you know, some Boston parents might drive two or three days a week. So, you know, recognize that it is a huge commitment and we certainly appreciate the benefit, you know, parents make. Um, but in Boston, because it's, you know, it's a, it's a whole family decision when you're choosing Mecca. It's not just I'm choosing Mecca for my kid, you're choosing Mecca for your family and that commitment thing, it's um, it's basic. Kids is just great. Like, I mean, I, I love hearing about, you know, what's happening. Alex and I get to hear about it a little bit once a month. But it's really been great to have you as partners.
Awesome. Yep, thank you. Thank you for having me. Any other questions?
Leila Masters Scholars May, that's like the one chess.
I mean, she's better than me. Awesome. Well, thank you for having me.
Uh, and then finally, um, I just, we're just talking of the Mecca representatives because I feel like you guys just arrived here and your terms are up. Um, so in our policy, which we um enacted June's ago, that really does feel like ten minutes ago. I think that's just function, what it feels like to get older. Um, time goes by so much more quickly. Um, in our policy, we outlined a two-year term. So just to, just because we're all in the room tonight, I think um, the election will be managed by the Mecca PTG. Um, and I I don't, we don't have as a school committee any direct involvement, so um, you know, I think particularly in the next few months, we'll just sort of have informal coordination. If um you could just sort of keep us updated as to the process and what it's gonna look like and eventually if you send back these two or um we have new reps, um just keep us abreast and um that term will switch over, yeah, before the end of the school year, I think. I think it was a little later, so I think Akia and I might have a little homework to do to figure out exactly when that term ended. I remember meeting.
So what's the term for the regular, for the other?
I'm gonna ask, decided on that because New York, three years, why are you?
We looked at other districts that has successful Mecca representative at the thirty level. Um, we looked at the legal question of whether they could vote or not. And the answer was no, that's stayed off. Um, uh but in other areas of participation, the answer is yes, yes, yes. Except for voting and executive session. Um, and uh two years we thought was good for a start, uh but certainly we could, we could change it. Three years seemed to be the prevailing number that seemed to work because we were thinking, what is a long enough time so people really understand how to, how to work on the committee? Um, but what is still a reasonable enough commitment so it wouldn't uh be a disincentive where people were biting off corn and they could chew necessarily. And I think we have a true term uh that's a big possibility.
We uh, we talked to Lincoln, uh let me get this right, Lincoln, that brought Weston, and I think we're the four.
We're the four.
We're the four. Um, then have Echo representatives on our committee. So when, when we wrote the policy, I think it was just, we actually voted, the entire committee voted together live. And our intention was to revisit the policy. We do have another policy meeting coming up. So I mean, that is definitely something that we could revisit. We haven't revisited the policy since we wrote it.
And most schools do these terms, like three years in the state, right?
Yeah, or some, but some have like, you know, it's like a year, the like one, one seat is a year, another seat is two years, another seat is three years. It's very, it's kind of all over the place in like the bigger um cities. You know, so. The towns, yeah, towns typically agree. So that would be something that maybe we should revisit in our next policy. She doesn't pay anything about it. When I talked to the representative of the Weston School Committee, she said, you know, I think I've done it for ten or fifteen years. And I, I didn't want to scare him in a way to say that you have to stay with us for ten or fifteen years. You have the ability to do that. And you also do not have to have a child.
Yep, alumni.
Alumni. You don't have to have a child in the.
Parents are guardians and alumni family.
The pay is not gonna go.
So yeah, so Akia and I and and um Tracy and I will continue to coordinate. So perhaps we can just get synced up with your schedule to manage our own expectations, but I do remember meeting you guys for coffee during the summer. So you were here and ready to onboard in the summer. Um, and I think your first meetings were August, so.
That might have been elections for the first time around. Does, does our policy say anything about?
Doesn't, no timing.
No, it doesn't.
Sure is not.
Which we then would use as a benefit to give us flexibility.
Yeah. And I guess I see both, I see difficult point, but it should mirror the other, you know, positively, you know, extreme inclusions. You know, so we, you know, we don't want, as parents, we, you know, we're different, you know, you know, we want to be there, we wanna be the best. Um, others could be anything. But I do see your point, you don't wanna scare people, say it's three years under, I think he's heard.
But, but now that you two have been on and people know more about.
There's a lot of uncharted waters still. Uh, you know, my biggest thing is, you know, having to sit at the table but don't have to vote. He just says to sit at the table. So what do we move, how do we move forward by making sure that whoever does sit in this position has the ability to speak on things that they wanna vote on? You know, there's things that, again, you know, meaning like middle school, if I had a vote, it would have been a different outcome. You know, if Ayesha had a vote, it'd be a different outcome. So things like that matter. And how do we move forward to make, again, you know, the language and legislation um partnered up different communities? Because Concord and Carlisle is not the only two districts that emerged. Lincoln suburb merged. How do they go about doing that? And that's something that I wanna explore so we can lobby folks in the state house to make it. Because Concord and, and Boston and Carlisle are gonna be merged together, you know, for years to come. This is not gonna be something that's just gonna disappear. We're not, we're talking about a good forty plus years of history and it's only gonna keep growing. Um, as our student population grows, um, you're gonna see more of that diversity because families are becoming different. You're starting to see um Concord families uh attend meetings to speak on issues that Boston families are facing. So that bridge is building. So how do we show that we are included? If we're not able to speak on certain things, what if?
I like the idea of three years. I think it is something that we should be debating at this point, not even got a history behind us. Um, all those merged districts still have the uh, the requirements provided state that the Concord, uh Concord can only send a Concord resident forward in a position. Carlisle can only send a Carlisle resident or Mecca, in your case, can only send a Mecca representative for our eligibility forward if in the near term, he can know is not gonna give you a vote. Let's be blunt about it. We're not gonna do it tomorrow. Um, then the question I think has to be for us more, more immediate. And we make sure that the Mecca reps have the influence on the school committee so you do feel that you've got a worthwhile function and role because, because I don't think we could get it. Don't quote me, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think we could get a special legislative act to, to change this law. Um, because the precedents beyond Mecca would be huge throughout the state. And if I'm right about that, then we gotta back into, okay, what is possible? And how are, how are you and we making sure that you got to fully, I don't get it, that you need and then we need from the Mecca, I mean, I don't know the exact answer, but yeah, we sure should be talking about that.
Good thing to be research on that. And Akia too, with the term, um, it might get valuable input from the parents to determine from a larger pool of people what um, what Mecca families want. Do they like the two years? Do they like one? Would it be better at their age to mirror our, to mirror our own terms here? Um, I, that would be feedback that I think would be really valuable. Um, not to make you do any work, but um, but I think that, I, I would want that before we endeavor to like sit in a room and change a policy. To me, that feedback is essential.
Yeah, I agree. I, I mean, feedback on the process, uh this was our first time right at this, so I think, you know, getting feedback from parents on what worked, what didn't work and helping me improve it, so.
And to that question of the, the term length, I think would be something that could be like very explicit, we just add, so.
I have to, sorry, I'm sorry. And I was just gonna say, when we wrote the policy, we did not have the two of you with us writing the policy. So now when we revisit the policy, we will have the two of you with us revising the policy. So I think that that is an important piece of it. And I, I do think, you know, we are in our terms, makes, like that makes sense to me. But it would be one thing like to just have more of a um discussion about that and with the broader Mecca. Yeah, I, I totally agree with that and I think the, like, we should actually explicitly put in here that after town, the town meetings when the candidates are sworn in, that's when, like that first meeting is what we, I mean, we can talk about that, whatever. But um, but I also just wanna say that I like, I'm really grateful to you two. I know it's a huge commitment and I, it's been really wonderful having you on. So thank you. And I know that whether you return or other people, I, I, I'm really happy that this is the change that's been.
I have a question about logistics. So you're not allowed to vote if you can't come to uh executive session. Are they included on sites? Don't read all my emails. Are they included on emails? So like if correspondence comes in?
Yes, they're on all the correspondence and then when we send like agenda overviews and all of that, all the agenda overviews, like anything that we receive. Um, you know, as a public document, absolutely.
And then on that, uh, I haven't done that either for this position, but in parallel, we, um, and I don't know. Our thing here is different. We have an access, not access, but well, we do have access to the agenda as far as suggesting what should be on our agenda. Do they have that? Do you know something's going on? We wanna see this on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think, you know, before we were playing this agenda, Alexa, um, you should make us know, we took a phone call and kind of go, we're like, what do you think? How do you think this sounds like? Is there anything else? And at any point, you know, we should all feel comfortable doing that. Even with these areas. You have something that you'd like us to discuss? You know, I mean, it's, it's important to have your voice on the table. So I'm glad you stayed the whole. I'm glad you stayed the whole time. This is what we really do when you guys. It's been great. And oh, and the only other thing um, that actually Lori, Andrew and I talked about is potentially hosting um. A panel, and it's a big one. Um, and this would go a little bit towards what you were saying, Kia, partnering with Mecca. Is hosting a panel in Concord with other area school committees that are looking to put Mecca representatives. On their school committee. And I think that that is part of Mecca two point O. Andrew, is that correct?
Yes.
That's part of it. So we would ask, you would. You should make us to, you know, help out with that and be part of the panel. It's kind of like, what's the experience been like?
How do you get it done?
How do you get it done? Yeah. And, and just to really, because I do think that there are districts that have led this, whether it's, you know, Lincoln, Weston, Bedford. You know, we're now with them. And so to really have all of us to come together and, you know, show other districts like this is what it takes to do it.
Yeah. And I will say when we were crafting that policy, she won't take credit for it, but Tracy called every school district. I mean, granted, it was three. But um, you know, she did call all of those school committee chairs. Um, and the Mecca representatives themselves to say, you know, how did you make this happen? What have been the successes? What have been the failures? Help us guide. Help, can you help guide us? And um, if we can be proactive so that people don't have to make those phone calls and they can come to one event here from everybody. I think that would be um. Really possible.
Coming back to the timing uh, for the term. Carrie looked up the adoption date and as we thought, it was in June. So we deliberately didn't set it because we didn't know how long it would take for the first elections. But now we know that we can be on a site. We didn't know that. And that's why we were silent.
Yeah, I was like, and I think like Carlisle town meeting is super late, right? Sometimes, yeah. This year it's late. We're. May thirteenth. So it's a little bit later than.
Cause we don't.
We don't get set until.
Right.
Like it, right. If they have their June meeting and then you first don't set.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, it's your election.
Um. Yeah, so, so thank you. All right. Um, I think we move on to our action items. And the first action item is the vote regarding the amenities building warrant article. Which we discussed, but I think that I would entertain a motion to eliminate um, moving the article. Article is to remove that and where do you go with this. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, yeah.
So you're, okay, so how about this? I move that the school committee not advance a warrant article in the amount of two point three million for the design and construction. Of the bathrooms, but to consider an alternative path forward.
But you might move it for a different amount.
Right, that was the alternative.
Your, your motion uses that.
Okay.
In essence, two point three.
We just want with the court.
Seconded by court. Any further discussion? Um, and I do see that Victor is on with us. So if he's listening right now from Gardwell, I think John was with us earlier and we will. Get an email once we take our vote. We'll send, yeah, probably tomorrow um, regarding this. So we have a second motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. And. Oh, and this.
The insurance.
The insurance. So do you want to discuss the insurance before you vote?
It's a formality in order to, to join Maya, a school committee to vote to join Maya. Um, so health insurance. For purchasing if. Three hundred plus school districts and municipalities across the state belong to it. It's much more stable. This is their resolution to join, to adopt it. Uh, we need to vote to adopt it. Come on, that very good trust. Now the town of Concord. So.
This is just in the region.
So we don't need to vote the, the school CPS, just the region. And you might want to change the motion to, when you get to them to say as word, instead of reading.
Okay. Aye. Yes.
More question. We were at one point very briefly hoping this was going to be cost neutral. It's not. Can you speak to where we're okay in the necessary bio? Is it called bio?
Yeah, the three, three hundred ninety-five thousand um, on excess and deficiency.
Bring that suggestion to that.
We will bring it forward. Um. I mean, I definitely would not recommend trying to play around the budget. Um, N H G voted, uh. People that left earlier didn't have this, but these are exit costs that we need to have people's insurance and their claims covered. Um, I do know that joining Maya, I've asked this question, if we were ever exit Maya, we would not have the same type of exit cost. It's not part of the program. So. This is a one-time cost of exit, maybe show the health group.
It's because of the dissolution.
Yeah.
And do you need uh, to firm up numbers further before a future request for school committee for E and D is, is going forward?
I don't need to firm up the number, the exit costs. What I can do is wait for a bishop approval for E and D. Uh, but she has gotten through the preliminary approval. It's now with the secondary approval. So. Once that's done, E and D certified, then you can go to.
I think once we're through the transition, we're part of content that Maya is going to be better ready for everyone. Um, we're just not going to see the savings this year, but going forward, we certainly expect to see some savings.
That's on the whole, they'll be, you know, because they only offer food cross. So depending on plans that other. That employees have had, it's a little bit of a mixed bag as to whether they're getting a reduction or an increase off of that. But over time, it's. Going to be a much more stable, comprehensive and solid fiscal approach to.
It's. And while it's not a savings, it's less than we would have if you stayed in that. So.
Yeah, there's still some positive points happening even with a big payout like that.
Right. So I would entertain a motion that the Concord parallel regional school district adopt the resolution to join Maya, including authorizing. The language as written in the motion.
Second.
So.
So court moved it. Cindy seconded. It's been a minute. Any further discussion?
Starting to ensure when you're sure of the answer. Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And with that, I, I.
Yes, as well, question. Have we ever officially wrote on the school calendar for mature?
Yes.
We did.
Thank you.
Yep. We voted on the school calendar and the half days are, there's a little asterisk about C C H F's half days that we will get those dates.
We're working on it.
They're still working on it.
But the actual.
I was asked that and I was looking back at agendas and I just couldn't find it.
So with that, I will adjourn the Concord Carlisle. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, no. Hi, everybody.